Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the meeting of the Transportation Subcommittee to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Chairman O'Nazo.
Here.
Counsel Leahy.
Here.
Counsel Martin.
Here.
Three present.
Thank you. Along with the Subcommittee, we have Counsel Cory Belanger is here this evening. Thank you, Counsel Belanger. We also have City Manager Murphy in the audience, and we have the Executive Director of the Lowell Regional Transit Authority, Jim Scanlon, and our recently appointed Board Member, former State Senator, former City Councilor, Phil Shea. Thank you both for being here. The purpose of tonight's Subcommittee is to get some information on three motions that were brought before the City Council. So if it's okay with my colleagues, we'll start with the first motion, which was by Mayor Elliott, second one by Counsel Kennedy. The City Council requests City Manager to provide a report on number of riders that use the LRTA bus. So that's the first motion, and I would turn the microphone over to Director Scanlon.
Thank you.
Just put the green light on. Is the green light on? Just, there you go. Press the perfect.
There we go.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. I gave a handout to the chairman and to the committee members indicating the MBTA, I mean, I keep saying MBTA, and I've been out of there a long time, indicating the RTA ridership in a snapshot. Generally speaking, the RTA runs, has approximately 6,000 riders a day, a few hundred thousand, a couple, 150,000 are their boats every month. Over the course of a year, we probably run anywhere from 1.4 to 1.5 million riders each year. We're probably in the mid-ridership amount of all the RTAs in the state. We're probably comparable, obviously, to Merrimack Valley, to Brockton, and to Worcester. So that gives you a snapshot of the ridership that we do have. Just a couple of quick points. Our busiest routes, as you probably can see, are Westford Street, Patuckettville, Burlington Leahy, Tewksbury, and obviously, we do a good amount of ridership with our shuttle. You know, we have approximately, I think, nine routes that really stay in the city of Lowell. We have about seven or so that either, that obviously emanate from Lowell and either go to Tewksbury, Drakehead, Chelmsford, and so on and so forth. So that's really kind of a snapshot of what we are. I will say that we're in the middle, we're in the middle to nearing completion of a comprehensive service analysis, which is required by the state. We will be holding public hearings over the next month or so. Some of the thoughts that are, as a prelude to that, some of the things that we're looking at and making some, in some respects, minor improvements to a few routes that we think we can do better. Those routes would be the Circulator, the Broadway route. There's an option, there's an opportunity maybe to make that into one route and make it more efficient. We also have another idea on the Centerville route of instead of going up Broad Street, maybe using the Cox Bridge and going that way because we have duplication with the Centerville and the Drakehead-Tingsborough down at the same corridor. And then we do have some improvements going to, for Chelmsford. So that's, in a nutshell, some of the key points of our ridership.
Thank you, Mrs. Scanlon. Any of the committee members have any questions at this juncture? Counsel Leahy?
Thank you. I just had a question. There was some concerns about the Patuckettville route. I didn't know if there was any thought into putting another bus up there or something. I guess there's, maybe there's a demand. I know you go up Vonham Ave, but people were asking if we were going to go up the Boulevard, I guess. So I don't know if that's too redundant or what the deal was with that.
Good question, Counsel. I have gotten a number of inquiries on that, and I'm going to take another look at it. We did look at it. It's a very, very difficult situation because, as you know, if we take the bus off Vonham Road, we're going to end up, in most respects, of ruining that route. In order to get the run on the Boulevard, we have to obviously take a detour off Vonham, and by taking that detour, we can't get up to where the demand is, which is a office building where I think the old SAB building is. So I've, a couple of people have asked me this. I've looked at it a couple of times. I've said that I'd look at it again. I will say that to put another bus on that route is very, very expensive because obviously, you've got to run it at very good headways, and obviously, I'm not sure you're going to get the same type of ridership just going up the Boulevard that you get up on Vonham. So I will pledge that I am going to look at that again.
Okay. I didn't know if there would be a demand with people using the river either, you know what I mean? Because you could have that, and then, like you said, during the school year, maybe the school kids, and then whatever you get at the office building, so. But as long as, yeah, if you could take another look at it.
It isn't, it is one of those situations where you would probably, if we could make an adjustment to the route so we don't follow up the route, I'd like to do it. If it turns out that we would have to put another bus on that portion, that becomes more difficult. But I will look at it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could, Mr. Scanlon, how would you respond to a comment that I've heard a number of times that if it wasn't for Lowell High School being downtown, your ridership numbers would not be what you're showing us this evening? Is that, is that an accurate statement? And will the service analysis that you do in the future actually break it out by, say, age group so that, you know, we can tell if you're capturing UMass Lowell students or Middlesex Community College students or others that are coming downtown to, say, shop and dine and so forth?
I don't think, Mr. Chairman, that our service analysis captures it by age group. I will tell you that obviously, the Lowell High School is an integral part of our system. As you probably know, we run a lot of extra service in the mornings to get kids, what we call special service, or trippers that come from either Belvedere, Patuckettville, South Lowell, and we bring them right to the high school. And then, as you probably well know, on the evenings, when it's 2:45, we send a good amount of buses, I think it's 11, all the way down there. Obviously, that's a lot of cost for the RTA, but it's something that we think we ought to do. I don't, I think that, I can only suggest to you that we probably have somewhere in the neighborhood of anywhere from 1,500 to 2,000 students that use it, and that could be on the high side. It could be 1,500. Again, I think that we're obviously happy that we have that ridership, and hopefully, it continues in the future.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel Martin?
Yeah. If I could follow up on that point. So those students pay?
Yes.
Are they a discounted rate?
Yeah, very discounted. I think, I have to confess with my advisory board member here, we are, we are the lowest, we charge the lowest of any RTA in the state. We charge obviously a dollar for a ride. Most of all, the RTAs are at a dollar and a quarter, a dollar fifty, and they do it by the amount of mileage, but we don't do it. If you're in town in Lowell, you pay a dollar. Student rates are very, very low. It's $20 for a monthly pass for a student. It's $20 for a senior, and I believe it's $35 for a regular pass. So one thing that we've tried to do is keep the fares low, and we haven't had a fare increase at the RTA since 2002.
So I was under the, maybe the mistaken assumption, you couldn't add, like, specific routes. Like you said, you put on extra buses in the morning, and at dismissal time for the high school, I thought you had to run general routes under your regulations, but it sounds like you've got a way.
No. What we, what we do, and it's obviously, it's appropriate, is that we run the route, like a Belvedere route, the way it's normally run, and we just, on the inbound, it will go right to the high school and then come back to the Kennedy Center. But it uses the same route that it was designed for, and that goes also, Counselor, for the Patuckettville, for the South Lowell. So instead of running on the South Lowell, instead of running into the Kennedy Center, it will run into, right to the high school so the kids can get there. Because if the buses fall, then we wouldn't be able to put anybody on there anyways.
So, and are there extra buses in those hours? Running the same route, running the laid-out route? At 7:00 in the morning, do you have two, and at noon time, you have one or something?
No. I'll give an example. With respect to the Patuckettville, I got a schedule here. You know, we're running a 6:55 inbound Patuckettville, okay? And then at 7:00, we're running a special one that goes right to the high school. So that's the way that we run. I guess you could say it's an extra bus.
Yeah. Okay. And then I, you know, so I walk at night, and I'll see, you know, a bus go up and down Heavy Street, you know, a half dozen times in the course of my walk, and there'll be two or three people on it. So I, they use it, and I know, I know some of them, so I think we should have that bus. But do you need the whole bus? I mean, are there other vehicles that you have available, or have you looked at something like that?
Deploying a smaller vehicle?
Yeah.
Let me just say, as you quite aptly put, a few years ago, as you remember, we added night service, or more nighttime service on all the runs. So in the case of the Belvedere, we now run a bus that probably, we used to run it stop at 6:00. Now we're running it, the last outbound from the Kennedy at 8:20. So we're running more buses. You know, we have 50 buses, of which, most of them are what they, standard buses from 30 to 35 feet, okay? Then, then you know, you see these smaller vans, and they're about 25 feet. We have about eight or 10, but we use those generally for the places we can't go over because of weight restrictions, and longer routes, let's say, to 129 all the way down to Westford. There are times that we do use those buses, and you've probably seen them on some of the busier routes like Belvedere and Westford Street. To respond back to your question quickly is that when you have a route like Belvedere, that's tied into a couple of other routes, Counselor. That's tied into, let's say, a Westford Street and a Patuckettville. So when they do the Patuckettville, that may turn into a Belvedere. So that bus, when people get off at the Kennedy Center, that bus then turns into a Belvedere bus. So therefore, we can't change buses at that point in time. So that's, that's kind of the long end of the start of it.
All right. Thank you.
Counsel Belanger?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Mr. Scanlon. Mr. Scanlon, thank you for being here today. Now that we're on the topic of the students now, Mr. Scanlon, this may sound like a dumb question, I'm sorry, but are the students, when they're busting from Patuckettville or the Highlands, are they driven to the Gallagher Terminal, then to the high school? Or, I mean, I heard you say there's a direct bus that goes to the high school, but for the most part, how does, how does that work?
Some of, a good many of them go right to the high school. And I could say that, you know, I'd have to go through them, Counselor. Patuckettville would be obviously one that I just mentioned. Belvedere would be another one that has a direct to the, to the high school. The Highlands has a, has two of them at 7:05 and 7:15, direct to the high school. You know, generally, there's, a lot of the main routes will have a direct bus going into the high, South Lowell being another one. So most of the Lowell area from east to west and north-south, they would have that.
Yeah. Okay. It seems like the rural areas, a few, that are far, they have at least one going around 7:00 AM in the morning, going directly to the high school.
Correct.
Correct. Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Belanger. One final question under this motion by Mayor Elliott has to do with your working relationship with Middlesex Community College and, say, UMass Lowell. How much of your ridership numbers would you say are students that attend both of those colleges or universities?
I would say that we don't have as close a relationship with Middlesex. We haven't had, they, they're now using a bus to go to Bedford. But obviously, I'm sure that some of their students are using it to get around the greater Lowell area and then over to the college in downtown Lowell. With respect to the university, you know, we, we would like to work with them. I've said to them before that the way we can help, some of the things that we're looking to improve is the Broadway and the Circulator route. Right now, those routes need, they can do a better job serving the university. I think Patuckettville, which is our UMass North route, does very good. The Circulator route is, is a, the design was right. Now, the way it operates, it actually goes too far. We go all the way down to East Merrimack, and then we come back downtown. Then we go around the ball field on the Lasha Park. We go up to the Fox Hall, then we go around up Merrimack Street, and we come back. The problem with that route is it's so, it's so long that it's defeating the purpose. So what we're trying to do is, we're kind of figure out a route that can serve both the north and south campus and Fox Hall. And the area that we were going, we're going to miss out is at East Merrimack Street, but we already have the Belvedere doing that already. So that's what we're trying to work on, a better connection there.
Okay. Anything else on this first motion? If not, I'll move on to the second motion, which was also by Mayor Elliott. Second one by Counsel Rock. City Council requests City Manager to work with the LRTA to develop a system to improve bus access downtown. I think this came about as a result of some discussions with some riders, as well as some business people in the downtown, that asked us to bring before the LRTA and the advisory board whether or not there's any thought to eliminating the Circulator and coming directly back to the downtown, and whether or not, and if you could touch upon whether or not the LRTA is planning any type of software that a student and/or a user can use on their iPhone in order to, I guess, understand better the routes, the timing, and so forth of the buses as they come into the downtown. So again, it's to improve the access into the downtown.
Okay. Good. I think, as I've mentioned to the City Manager before, because he, the one that got me interested in this, although we were, started to do it anyways, but, because he had a son using it in Boston. But we have a contract underway that's about 30 to 40 percent underway to put a whole new AVL GPS system on all our buses so that anybody, any of our customers, whether it be students, whoever, that has an iPhone, iPad, computer, they can access where our buses are on all our routes. If they're at a bus stop that we have, they'll be able to, there'll be a code up there that they can access and see where the bus is. We will have monitors at the Kennedy Center and at the Gallagher Terminal. So I think you'll see within the next, hopefully, four months or so, maybe even sooner, we should have a whole new state-of-the-art system so that everybody, particularly the savvy people that use computers and iPhones, they're going to know where their bus is and when it should be arriving. So that's, I think, the second part of your question, of your comment. The first part relates to how we can improve access to our buses in the downtown. You know, one thing that we have done, and I know people don't see it as much, but we don't have a hub downtown, and we all know that the hub is at the Gallagher Terminal, the Kennedy Center. But one thing that I think I've done and others, and we've tried to have as much activity of our buses in downtown as we could. And we, and I will say that we're going to continue to work on that. I'm going to go through a couple of things for you quickly, Mr. Chairman, but I'll go through Christian Hill, okay? On the outbound, it goes right through downtown. Right now, it's, it goes into the back of the high school on the outbound. We are talking about moving that, taking a right when it gets down at the end of Dutton or Thondike, and taking a right on Merrimack, and then taking a left on Chantilly, okay? On the inbound, that bus comes right up Broad Street, and it comes right through downtown. The Belvedere, in the morning, we have five trips that it goes right through downtown. The problem's going to be on the Belvedere, is trying to get that back downtown, is that it obviously takes more time for that bus to go downtown than it does High Street. So, but again, I, we're going to look at that. South Lowell, that route, you know, obviously stops at the Kennedy Center. It would be kind of imprudent for me to say that I could take that bus and not stop at the Kennedy and use the shuttle because that, when you, when you go from the Kennedy Center or Dutton or Thondike Street downtown, it takes obviously anywhere from five to 10 minutes getting down there and back, and that really, that route, that follows up obviously the whole system because when you add that by 20-odd trips of the day, that adds a lot of time into the routes. Highland Stevens, the same thing. Trying to get that bus, you know, downtown. The issue on some of these routes is a lot of these people that are using, whether it be Highland or South Lowell or Westford Street, they want to go to the train station, and they want to take a connection to Berwick or Burlington Mall. And by the time it would take a Highland or a Westford Street to get downtown, it would really cause a lot of problems with the whole schedule. So that's the problem there. But I will tell you, when the Centerville, the Christian Hill, the Drakehead-Tingsborough, they all are going to go, they all go downtown right now. I'm hoping to get those on the outbound to see if we can go take a right on Merrimack Street, if that's, as opposed to going back at the high school. On the Patuckett, on the Patuckettville, we come down, and we come right out the front of this building, as you know. I've talked even the other day about maybe just going through, taking a, going through onto Merrimack Street, maybe taking a right on Shattuck, or even continuing up to Central Street. What would that add for time of that bus? Because, as I mentioned earlier, that Patuckettville will then become a Westford Street. So if you don't get that bus back on time, then the people are waiting for the Westford Street. So a lot of it is timing, but we do have the shuttle going downtown every 15 minutes. We have the Circulator all throughout the downtown every 40 minutes. We have the buses that I mentioned from Centerville, Christian Hill, Drakehead-Tingsborough, all the high school buses that we do during the morning, all the ones we do in the evening. But again, I will continue to work at how to make buses more active in the downtown.
Thank you, Director Scanlon. Counsel Martin?
Thanks. Can you explain the difference between the shuttle and the Circulator?
Yes. The shuttle, Counsel, is a bus that operates every 15 minutes. Every 15 minutes, that bus leaves, 15 minutes leaves the Kennedy Center, and it's down here downtown at the new bus stop on Merrimack Street. Anybody who, let's say, coming from a Burlington Leahy or a South Lowell, or even a Westford Street, or a Highland, Shaw Stevens, when they come into the Kennedy Center, in order for them to get downtown, they get on a, on a shuttle, and vice versa. If they're downtown and they want to get back on those routes, they would then take the shuttle from either downtown or from the Kennedy Center to go vice versa. The Circulator was a concept that we had when we changed over to the, to the hub to have a lot, to try to get as much activity in downtown. So what we tried to do there is we tried to get a bus that would kind of do what it says, a Circulator, where it would, it would start at the Kennedy Center, and then it would, it would then go up Appleton Street. It would then go down High Street. It would go, then it would take a left and go hit East Merrimack Street, come down past the auditorium, go downtown, going back at the songers, go up to Fox Hall, and then it would come around up in that area and then get, then come back downtown, come back down Central Street and go in. So we tried to do the whole downtown with that Circulator bus. And again, I think what I said earlier, Counsel, is we're trying to look at that and see if we can do it a little bit better, and maybe shorten that route a little so that we can get more activity on it, and use it for more college kids.
Yeah. So the idea is that if I'm at, I don't know, the UMass Lowell and in Conference Center, I could get on and go over to Fox Hall or Little Lasha Park? Right? On this Circulator?
Yes.
I mean, you think it goes too far now, and we're going to, you're shrinking it down.
Yes. Yes. That's what we want to do it.
That's the, that's the.
Exactly.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Thank you. Counsel Leahy?
Thanks. Mr. Scanlon, when they do the iPhone app or whatever, is that, other questions we had were delays, winter delays, so that'll be on that app too?
Yes.
And if they don't have an iPhone, they can check the computer, and it shows all the delays and all that stuff?
That's correct.
All right. And then I just had a quick question about the new bus stop in front of the Bon Marche Building. That's where it is, right? Merrimack Street?
Yes.
Is that going to be marked out any differently, or is that fairly new, or?
Yes. We're working with the city, and it's my understanding, they just have to, they'll be getting to that.
Okay. All right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Belanger?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you again to Mr. Scanlon. Now, I'm sorry, Ms. Scanlon, I think I missed, but the, this date on the, having the iPhone app, about how far are we away from that, approximately?
I would say at the outset, although it would be four months. I'm hoping that it's going to be sooner.
Oh. Excellent.
Yeah. I would say, I would say, let's see, today's, maybe July, somewhere around July. We're, right now, the company has, Counsel, has just about completed, you know, what they had to do was obviously take all our bus stops and computer them into the computer, and we've given them all that information. They're putting all the software together right now. Probably within a few weeks, they're going to complete that, and then we'll be meeting with them on the hardware. We'll be talking about what do we do with the Kennedy Center and Gallagher Terminal to retrofit, retrofit the hardware so that we have monitors in the right locations. We're trying to put monitors in the Kennedy Center where the stanchions are. So the difficult part, as you can imagine, is doing the, doing the software part. And so we're pretty well on our way with that right now.
Wonderful. Wonderful. And we're looking forward to that, because I think that's going to be very helpful, Jim, especially with the young generation. They want, that's how they operate quite frankly. So I think that'll be very helpful to us.
And it was a substantial contract. It was like, I think it was $600, $6,000. It was a pretty good-sized contract for us.
Wow. Wonderful. Okay. And on a second notice, we're on buses to the downtown that, you know, I'd just like to make a few points that. I know years ago, they were moved out of the downtown. There was sort of an outcry from businesses at the time, and, you know, the students might have been a little bit too disruptive, the high number of them going to this, you know, small block on Merrimack Street was a bit disruptive, but it's funny, when I talk to businesses a couple of years after they left, they wanted them back all of a sudden. And I know, you know, a woman who owned a cell, a cellphone store on Merrimack Street says pretty much, this was the reason, once I lost those buses, it was my demise. It was a slow, it was a slow death. And a clothing store, that went out of business. I polled him about two years ago, talked to him, and he misses the, he missed the buses dramatically too. So I just asked that, you know, we could really, this would be really helpful to our merchants if you could please do your best and have a drop-off on Merrimack Street whenever. I know you have other areas and other timeframe. I know there's several challenges for you, but please, from a city perspective, please, please do your best because I know it will be helpful.
No. I appreciate your comment. And let me say this, I was involved with it when we, when we moved it out of downtown and where we are today. I will tell you that I think the actual operations is 100 percent better where it is now than it was before. As you know, in, before, it was helter-skelter on where you would get a bus, whether it be Patuckettville, Belvedere, whatever. You, you just had to keep walking on the side of bus. There was no bus hub down there. It was just buses standing, and then you had to try to figure out, talk to someone where you, where you would pick up a bus. The operation is 10 times better. But whatever I can do to try to help you in the, in the city, in the City Manager work on the downtown, we're going to be there for you.
Well, thank you.
Well, thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor Belanger. Anything else on the second motion? Okay, thank you, Mr. Scanlon. Last motion to come before the subcommittee this evening made by Council Kennedy, seconded by Council Belanger. City Council requests city manager have LRTA provide a report regarding handicapped access to buses. And I understand that there are some folks here that would like to address the subcommittee, address Mr. Scanlon and advisory member, Mr. Shea. So at this point, if it's okay with my colleagues, I'll open it up to the public. You could come to the podium and state your name and address, please.
Thank you. My name is Charles Regatas. I've been a lifelong resident of the city and Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. First of all, let me just say one thing. I have the utmost respect for Mr. Scanlon, Mr. Good and those members of the LRTA administration. They've always been very forthcoming and willing to listen to commuters and myself. As far as the LRTA is concerned, regular bus routes with regular-sized buses, fine. The Roadrunner Service, even though I particularly don't think that the shortcut buses are particularly advantageous because if you are sick, if you have an orthopedic problem, they do shake you pretty well, number one. But they are specific in the sense that people do come in, they can get on the wheelchair ramp. My problem was with the use of similar vehicles for regular routes. I've been over in Shattuck Street sometimes where there were three of them in a row. Now, if I wanted to basically disrupt everything, I can ask the driver to get out, come out, lower the wheelchair, have me go up. It necessitates five to seven minutes, maybe even 10 minutes to do that. In a Shattuck Street and other places, it's very difficult. So what I think is more beneficial, there is a low-floor vehicle, which I'm sure you've seen all around the city, that the University of Massachusetts uses, the ones with all the smiling students on them. You walk directly in, there's a wheelchair ramp. According to the promotional material by Alliance Vehicles in Texas, which has a subsidiary in Hudson, they are advantageous because of several things. First of all, a wheelchair person can go in directly without a ramp or anything else. I mean, it is a ramp, but not a lift. People like myself who have to use a walker, people who have crutches and or canes, women with strollers, and people who have the little baskets with their, with their food, so, and everyone else. It's just difficult. It's just the same as walking toward a thing. Has a configuration of somewhere between 18 and 23 seats. The university has, I talked to the university this morning, they told me about Alliance up in Hudson, but I called Alliance in Texas. I was told that the LRTA had actually looked into this maybe a year ago. So I guess Mr. Scanlon and I may be on the same page as far as this is concerned, as far as the advantages of it. But I believe something happened with a consortium. Now, I know that the federal, state and local governments do provide subsidization for it as well as the fares. So I'm not sure exactly where this is going to go, but I think it would be advantageous and beneficial for the population in Lowell to have these. Also, you might, they might have mentioned about the fact of the weight distribution for some areas in Lowell. Well, the larger buses may be too big, but this may be splitting the difference. It may be, you know, low enough in weight capacity so that you could use this on a larger basis. I think it could be used in all routes. The use of those small buses, because it necessitates going up three steps, is very difficult. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Regatas. Mr. Scanlon, yes, please.
If I can respond to that. Charles, I appreciate his comments and I totally agree with him. Because he's, Charles is correct. We, there were two consortiums put together for buses with the state over the last two years. One was for the regular 30 and 35-foot bus. And actually, I'm happy to report that we will have, we're going to be taking delivery of six 30-foot buses in a few weeks. We just took delivery of four buses, four smaller buses that Charles doesn't like, which I totally agree. And they replaced four that were, that are going to be scrapped within the next few weeks. I was, I am, I pushed very hard to have a low-floor bus the way Mr. Regatas wants because I thought it was pretty difficult to be able to, two reasons. One, it's difficult on the passenger, and two, it's difficult on the driver. Because what happens is the bus that we use now, a driver has to get out of the van, he has to go to the back of the bus, and then he has a pneumatic type of a switch and he has to push it and then he has to pull it down and it disrupts the whole operation. Unfortunately, the consortium that we use, the two consortiums that were set up, the second one that was, that was, that was a champ, put together by Springfield PVTA, we pushed them very hard to have the bus, the Alliance bus that Charles had mentioned. And we actually tried to have the state do a separate bid and see if they would do it. Neither party had the experience or the willingness to do it. I will tell you today, Charles, that we took these four in and I will look forward, I will work hard to maybe try to see if we can put a bid together on our own to have a separate bid go out next year for lower buses because it's something that we got caught into. The state wanted us, they wanted us to get the money and spend it and commit it and we were part of that procurement. But I do think in the long term, it's a way better bus for the, for the access community.
Thank you, Mr. Scanlon. Anyone else from the public like to address the subcommittee? Yes, sir. Please come to the podium and state your name and address, please.
My name is Silia Dennis. I live in West Minister Village. My only question is, the LRTA is doing a good job, but my question is, are they going to be able to increase ridership on Sundays if they get a contract from the federal government?
Your question is whether or not you'll be able to increase ridership on Sundays?
Yes.
Well, in, in, in my view, it is probably the highest priority that I will have going forward. It's clear to me that because of, you know, because of the problems that we have obviously with the budget over the last year or two, I think we're, we're going to be, we're going to correct that. But going forward, we need to have some type of a Sunday service. We are probably the only midsize RTA in the state that doesn't have a Sunday service. You know, obviously, Toareese, Merrimack Valley has it. I know Martin Tewset doesn't have it, but I know Worcester has it, I know Brockton has it, I know PVTA has it. Down in Fall River, New Bedford, Surda, they're looking to try to get a Sunday service. So, but we're the last mid-sized property that doesn't have a Sunday service and I honestly believe we should have it. When I drive up here and on a Sunday to visit my son up in New Hampshire, I look at the different malls and I think about, how about, it must be nice for people to drive in there, but it would be even nicer if people don't have vehicles that they can do the same. So that is a top priority of mine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to address? Yes, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Anastasia Sakalaris and I'm 29 Norcross Street Lowell. I wasn't scheduled to speak, but I just want to say I came here because I'm very much interested, I'm glad that it was mentioned, bringing the buses back downtown. I have written the letters to the Lowell son, you may have read them, about how much I really believe that we should really bring them back downtown. I will tell you from my own experience, I don't take the bus anymore, it takes too long. It takes, it used to take me, I take the Chumsford Street, I would take the Chumsford Street bus to come downtown, and it used to take me at the most 15 minutes. I'd get to the end of Chumsford Street and I'd be downtown 15 minutes. It just went straight downtown from Chumsford Street. Now it takes me almost an hour. I'd have to wait for the bus at Chumsford Street, take it to Gallagher Terminal, wait around, and mind you, very often it's cold and rainy or whatever and you wait there, and then you have to hop on another vehicle and wait for that. And it take, what used to take me 15 minutes takes me, could take as much as an hour. And also, I really, as far as them running much smoother now than they used to, I'm sorry, but I confess to being around long enough to remember when the buses were downtown. And I think most people here probably have, hasn't been that long ago. They ran beautifully. They were quick, they were easy. And if there's a problem with the kids at the high school, deal with that separately. I know that people loved it, they stopped down, and I think that you will see a revitalization of Lowell like you never saw if you bring them back downtown. No one likes it. Mr. Scanlon, I'll tell you honestly, I don't know anyone who likes this Gallagher Terminal interference. If you want to put a circulator and have it go to the train station for people to take it, that's fine too. But if people just want to go downtown and don't want to go to the train station, I just think that, you know, the shortest distance between two points is a straight line and that's what we had when they went downtown. I think it's the best thing we could ever do for downtown and for the people, for the merchants downtown is just to bring it back the way it used to be. If it wasn't broken, why did we fix it? And that's all I have to say. Yeah, I guess that, that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Thank you. Mr. Scanlon? Oh, yes, ma'am. Excuse me.
I respect, I respect her comments. You have some different points, but one thing that I will say is that we try to be as quickly as possible to have a 15-minute.
Okay. Thank you. Ma'am?
My name is Margaret Foley. I'm from Lowell. Lived in Lowell most of my life except for 20 years in religious life. Anyway, I'm 74 years old. I take the bus six days a week, practically every route I know by heart. I'd say from my experience with doctors' offices and other computers, turn off the computers, I bet a lot of us present could make up the schedule. One suggestion I have is instead of, bring the buses back downtown. I agree with that wholeheartedly. A lot of time is wasted going to the Kennedy Center. You miss your connection. The connections are not that great still. To give a concrete example, I live on High Street at Father Norton Manor. Saturday morning, there's an 8:20 inbound Belvedere. On Saturday, the trains only run every two hours, 7, 9, 11, et cetera. The Belvedere inbound very seldom gets to High Street in time to make it to the end of the route to get the 9 o'clock train. So there you are, stuck for another two hours or you go home or you do something else. You twiddle your fingers for two hours or you walk the streets or you do something. The buses just, the connections are not good, especially on Saturday. And on Saturday, the business of having everything run at the same hour, which is most of it, like the Lawrence system does, it works in Lawrence, but I don't think it works in Lowell. You don't make the connections. You miss your connection by like five minutes because there's not enough time given for the route, there's, you know, all the stuff that goes on. People without fares ready, old people like me, there's lots of reasons, but the connections are not good, especially on Saturday. A lot of, a lot of people miss buses on Saturday. I had another idea about, instead of this crazy going back and forth to the Kennedy Center and waiting and wasting your time and blah, 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 bring the buses back downtown. But also, I've lived in Lowell just about all my life, I know the city. Run the buses up and down the main streets of the city. Gorham Street, have them go up and down, I mean, from, I don't care where, Billerica to downtown Lowell. Patacaville, have another bus running up, maybe two buses running up and down Pataca Street all the time. Gorham Street, the main streets of the city, let the buses be on routes that run, you know, with the flow of the city. Instead of all this crisscrossing and going back and forth and, you can't connect with one bus system either with another. You can't, if you're out in Billerica, you can't connect with something else that might be near Route 129 in Chumsford. There's no way to connect. You've got to come back to the Kennedy Center, waste another hour or two to make, hope you make a connection. Let the buses run with the flow of the city streets. They talk about all the added service. Unfortunately, like two, some weeks ago, U Lowell had this thing on human trafficking. The people parked their cars at City Hall here and they walked up to U Lowell, to University Crossing. There were some older people up there that had no way to get back to their cars that they had parked at the Olympia Restaurant. We asked around. I didn't have a ride. I had taken the bus up earlier, but they, and I spoke to Mayor, to Mayor Rodney about this, at the Irish thing that I went to, that there are no special buses for special events for those of us who have to take buses. Special events like the Vietnamese Water Festival. I would love to go to that, but there's no way of getting to that side of the river. I can't get to church, I have to walk down to the 8 o'clock mass down at the shrine if I want to go to a mass early or go to, you know, I have to walk down. And as far as Sunday service, that'd be nice to not have to walk in the winter down, you know, to church. So, and the small buses, get rid of them, sell them to somebody, do away with them. They're bumpy, they're noisy. My back kills me when I, I stopped going to my chiropractor on the Christian Hill route because the small buses I used for that route and they kill my back. They're noisy, they're not well-ventilated in the summer, the air conditioning doesn't work that well, and they're too small to ventilate well. Stick with the big buses. If you want to imitate the Lawrence Bus Company, do what they do with their big buses. Anyway, and the rule on folding the strollers, some bus drivers enforce it and some don't. I was on a bus one time, there was an old, two old senior citizens, each with a walker. A carriage got on, a stroller, the bus driver didn't tell the person to take the child out of the stroller and fold up the carriage. Some bus drivers do and some don't. So you have strollers obstructing the aisle sometimes or making it difficult for a person to get on who has a walker. And they need to be consistent in enforcing some of the safety things. Anyway, I think that might be the end of my comments.
Okay.
But I know the system. I take the bus like every day, six, four or five times a day. I'm out like all day long riding buses and I was late tonight because, is it possible to work with the Lowell Police Department to override some of the traffic? We're coming to, the inbound Belvedere, which I took to get here, we get to the intersection of what is a Green Street where it intersects at Gorham. Three lights changed before we could advance. I mean, I lived in Buffalo, New York 20 years because I was in the convent and the police used to override the lights and help with the traffic situation at rush hour. And it would be wonderful at rush hour sometimes if you had policemen overriding the lights, moving things along because three and four lights change. Church Street at High is horrendous. All over the city, they're horrendous.
We'll certainly convey those comments to the city manager.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Margaret. Thank you for being here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. My colleagues at this point. Would you like to have a closing comment and then?
No, first, I just want to close by saying thank you for giving me the opportunity to come down and, you know, give some, respond to some of the motions that have been made. Be glad to do it any other time. And obviously, you know, the LRTA wants to do, along with its representative, whatever we can to make a goal with the great city it is right now and even better. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Scanlon. Great. Thank you. Mr. Scanlon. Council Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Scanlon. You had mentioned that you're in the process of doing a sort of assessment of the system.
Yes.
Would it be possible for members of the council to get a hold of that when that's complete?
Yeah, well, Council, we'll be having kind of what we call a two, public outreach sections and a public hearings. I'm trying to schedule them right now. They'll probably sometime over the next month.
Okay.
And so you
Public hearing in Belvedere.
Yeah, that was a public outreach, yeah. Thank you. Yeah, we're going to have a couple of, where we think that there are areas for improvement that, one being a change in Belvedere, one being a change in Centerville, in any other areas that we think that in the acre, that we have, looking at a potential improvement there. So we'll be having public hearings or outreach sessions in there, and then we'll also have public hearings at the end.
So some of these issues that were brought to our attention tonight might be addressed as a result of those hearings?
They can be brought up. They may not be specific to what the study is, but any of those issues, we'll be glad to listen to and make better. I will make a comment, Mrs. Foley, Margaret Foley is a good friend of mine. She's a great rider of the LRTA. She comes, visits me, I don't know, probably every other week. I will tell you that we have some new, even though, I know you don't like the smaller buses, Margaret, we have four new ones on the road right today, and they're 10 times quieter than the other ones, because I've ridden in the old ones, and I realize how bumpy they are. But the new ones are, are working very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Leahy?
Sure. Can I just make one more comment? If there's anything that we can do as a city, too, to help you regarding this motion, you know, any of the bus stops, if they're not, if you think we should be doing a better job with the snow, or if there are puddles when it rains, or, just so people with any type of disability, you know, might be with a walker, cane, wheelchair, sight impaired, anything that, you know, we can do to work with you to make sure that this, you know, that everybody has a better experience using the buses. You know, let us know what we can do to help you, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Margaret. One more minute. We're pushing up against our meeting time. Microphone, please. Microphone, please. Thank you.
I would just ask, and I know they have time constraints, but I mentioned to Mr., to Kevin Wetzis-Maguire, before you make changes, questionnaires are okay, but they don't seem to really go too far. Hearings might be, I talked to everybody today I met on the street. I tried to get people here. I think I'm responsible for a couple, two or three people being here tonight, because I told them, talk, come out of your offices and talk to live people, like on a monthly basis. Mr. Scanlon, Mr. McGuire, everybody, just come out of your offices on a regular, talk to the real passengers one-on-one. I think that would work better.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that being said, I would entertain a motion to accept the reports that we heard this evening as a report of progress by Council Leahy, seconded by Council Martin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, it's a vote. Thank you again, Mr. Scanlon, Mr. Shea.
To adjourn.
Moved to adjourn by Council Martin, seconded by Council Leahy. We stand adjourned. Thank you.